Evening, this is the June eighth meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up, we have an extension, appeal number two thousand sixteen dash zero thirty five, Tom Carson. They've asked for an extension. There you go, motion.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number two is reading. Okay, so we have appeal number two thousand seventeen dash eighteen, Riverhead PGCLC. For variance sought will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood because the shopping center exists as it is. Proposed movie theater and restaurants are permitted in the existing building. Okay, they don't want to be set back further than they exist in the building, and will have a graduated height. One loading berth with minimal traffic will not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method. It is feasible only because the one loading berth uh berth is required by the movie theater. The theater has a stadium seating, which is incidental to the modern movie theaters, and the height is needed to accommodate some speed. Requested variance is not substantial. The applicant has worked to lessen the variance. Few feet are needed to for the parapet to provide the screen for the mechanicals, which helps lessen the impact on the surrounding area. Requested variance will not have an adverse uh impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Because the proposed building is smaller in size, and will include the proper grating and drainage as required by site plan. It lends difficulty that the property owner's experience was not self created, because the model used in the theater requires additional height to accommodate the stadium seating. Based upon the foregoing, the following variance is granted, and if granted, it is subject to the following conditions, which is based upon the evidence presented, will minimize the adverse impacts that the variance would have on the community or the district identified.
Pending secret.
Pending secret, thank you. Any more?
So move second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the appeal has been granted. Okay. Would you like to say something?
Uh, repeal has been granted, and if there are folks here that were here on the other meetings about the theater, gotta remember it goes to planning that. And when those meetings come up, I would advise you all to attend, because that's where some of the things that you are all concerned about are gonna be discussed and be regulated.
Okay, moving on. You got the reading.
Um, are you moving on to James Farley?
We are, James Farley.
Got the post adjourned from what I just started to do.
All right, you can read.
Next we'll have appeal number two thousand seventeen dash thirty for James Farley fifty eight South Jamesport Ave. Of Jamesport, forbearances to end or release from the provisions of chapter three zero one section seventeen, where the proposed front yard setback is eighteen feet, where the minimum required is fifty feet. The proposed side yard setback is five feet, where the minimum required is twenty five feet. The proposed combined side yard is eight point three feet, where the minimum required is fifty five feet. And from the provisions of chapter three zero one section two 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 B, where the application represents a change from one preexisting nonconforming use to another nonconforming use, requiring a special exception, where a two-family dwelling is proposed to be converted to a single-family dwelling, and the construction of a new single-family dwelling is proposed, resulting in two detached single-family dwellings on the subject parcel.
Mr. Cuddy? You have the floor, Mr. Cuddy.
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Farley are both here again tonight. We spent some time last time at their first hearing, uh going through each of the criteria that we thought were important. And I would point out to you once again, that the setbacks that we're talking about actually are less than the setbacks that are presently there for the existing garage. I think when you look at this site, and you see that aesthetically, it's going to be improved. And residentially, there's gonna be no greater depth or yield than there is right now, because there are gonna be two families, and there's still gonna be two families. That the entire neighborhood, from this type of of improvement, uh will be improved. And so, the Farleys and myself have indicated to you, and I think if you looked at our application in depth, that this is a change that's beneficial to the community. It has nobody who's supposed to, uh I think that it's appropriate to and meritorious. And I would ask you to, we're both here again, to answer any questions if you have.
The existing garage is gonna stay, that one that's not gonna be remodeled, up to close to be remodeled, is that correct?
No, the existing garage is gonna be taken down, and its place is going to be the house, it's the same, exact same size.
Which is gonna be set back further from the front load?
Yes, that's correct, correct.
Just a quick question, Mr. Cuddy. The um section of code that you are seeking relief under for the two-family is which section, or what?
It's the change, it's under the nonconforming use, the change. Where the change is heard by the son.
Not changing one nonconforming use to a different nonconforming.
That's right, that's correct.
I just was qu- um looking at the definition of two-family that says a building. So the question was, are you seeking relief from the requirement that the two-family be maintained in a building rather than the the two separate structure?
Yes. Yes. That's correct.
And the two-family is already a nonconforming use in that district, I'm sorry. So that you're s- you're looking to give them two, the two types of dwelling. One is also from I'm just gonna add this section. So
So I just had an R B forty.
Yes, it's an R B forty.
Just make it.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Those things like that.
Yeah, no. Charlie, is it R B forty?
Yes. That's correct.
Where is it saying? Forty forty.
What?
Yeah.
It's all right.
That's one of the problems.
Right, yes.
It's not. That didn't work.
Yep, oh wait, it's 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 making, sorry.
Just wanna make sure.
Making very bad.
The internet, that's all.
Yeah, you won't get it. Okay, so I moved in the determination of fifty eight South Jamesport Avenue, James Farley, is it? Forvariances and or relief from provisions of chapter three oh one, section seventeen, where the proposed front yard setback is eighteen feet, where the minimum required is fifty feet. The proposed side yard setback is five feet, where the minimum required is twenty five feet. The proposed combined side yard is eight point three feet, where the minimum required is fifty five feet. And from the provisions of chapter three oh one, section two 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 B, where the application represents a change from one preexisting nonconforming use to another nonconforming use, requiring a special exception. Two-family dwelling is proposed to be converted to a single-family dwelling. And the construction of a new single-family dwelling is proposed, resulting in two detached single-family dwellings on the subject parcel. And from section three oh one dash three, which requires a two-family must be situated within a building, be approved in accordance with the application and sketches with the members there to, if any, as filed with the buildings.
Second.
All right. Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal has been granted, and best of luck with it, and you know the process, Mr. Cuddy. Good luck, folks.
Next, we have appeal number two thousand seventeen dash thirty one for Dominic Roselli.
Well, we're gonna get that, they didn't have the postal, so. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'll take that back.
On the northwest corner of Pulse Ave and two and a half Street, Waiting River, forbearances to end or relief from the provisions of chapter three zero one, section thirty A, where the proposed dwelling has one thousand three hundred ninety-five square feet of living area, where the minimum required is fifteen hundred square feet. Chapter three zero one, section thirty one, where the proposed impervious surface is twenty-one point one percent of the total lot area, where the maximum permitted is fifteen percent. The proposed front yard setback is thirty feet, where the minimum required is sixty feet. The proposed side yard setback is sixteen and a half point five feet, where the minimum required is thirty feet. The proposed combined side yard is forty-one point five feet, where the minimum required is sixty feet. The proposed side yard of running aside street is twenty-five feet, where the minimum required is sixty feet. And the proposed rear yard setback is thirty feet, where the minimum required is seventy-five feet.
All right, you got the um all the levels, right? Go ahead, Mr. Cuddy.
Good evening, Charles, Cuddy, for the applicant, I'd like to hand up two uh my items if I could. This is a decision that the board uh granted on similar lot in November of twenty fifteen. And also I have a map to show the difference between these two parcels, uh one that's here tonight and one that was in twenty fifteen.
One of the things you
Wonderful, thanks.
This is an application that's in the R B eighty district. And as the board is aware, in much of Waiting River, and particularly in this area of Waiting River, many of the lots are one-eighth the size of eighty thousand square feet, or ten thousand square feet of lots. This this particular lot is nine thousand square feet. I've given you a map to show that in twenty fifteen, November, where the yellow marks are on Pulse Avenue, we granted a variance under very similar conditions. This is a few hundred feet away from that site. That lot was actually smaller, that was a seventy-five hundred square foot lot, this is a nine thousand square foot lot. In each case, very similarly, again, you have setbacks that are required because of the R B eighty setback, which apparently the town board will not change. The community is with houses in it, for the most part, houses on relatively small lots. There is really no alternative, except to build a house that's roughly thirteen, fourteen hundred square feet. The house that was built in twenty fifteen was fourteen hundred twenty-five feet. The house proposed here is thirteen seventy-five, it's a little bit smaller. But again, um the size of the lot doesn't allow you to build a very big house. And the setback is virtually the same as they were in the twenty fifteen decision. Again, the community isn't hurt by this, because it's what the community is, relatively small lots with houses. There's really no alternative but to ask for the variances because of the R B eighty requirements. Um, it's not a self-created situation, because this is a single and separate lot that's been here. And certainly somebody should be entitled to build one. So I would ask the board, based upon your prior decision, and the fact that we're in an R B eighty district with a lot that's one-eighth the size, uh we would ask the board to grant the variance as as proposed.
I'd like to get a whole lot of guy to do all these lots back in the day, that's in the whole story. Anyway.
Hey, was the phone back then?
Yeah.
There wasn't even zoning back then.
Does anyone have a problem with this? Any neighbors, anyone? Anybody? Yeah, it's just the way the the area is, we understand that, it's just it is what it is. Okay. Nobody else has anything to say, board members, anybody have any problems? Is that a reading?
I moved in determination of N W C Hollesam Avenue, two and a half Street, Waiting River, forbearances to end or relief from our provisions of chapter three oh one, section thirty eight, where the proposed dwelling has thirteen hundred ninety-five square feet of living area, where the minimum requirement is fifteen hundred square feet. Chapter three oh one, section thirty one, where the proposed impervious surface is twenty-one point one percent of the total lot area, where the maximum permitted is fifteen percent. The proposed front yard setback is thirty feet, where the minimum required is sixty feet. The proposed side yard, proposed side yard setback is sixteen point five feet, where the minimum required is thirty feet. The proposed combined side yard is forty-one point five feet, where the minimum requirement is sixty feet. The proposed side yard of running on side street is twenty-five feet, where the minimum required is sixty feet. The proposed rear yard setback is thirty feet, where the minimum required is seventy-five. Granted, reports for the application and sketches will be delivered through two of many, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
All right, Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Again, you got the process down pretty good, Mr. Whitmire. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you followed the code here, you'd have a very, very small house.
You have a bad feeling, that's what you get. That's another All right. Emily, you have the uh, you're on the floor.
Um, do you wanna announce for instance for Robert?
Uh, I'm sorry, okay, appeal number uh two thousand seventeen dash thirty two. Um, they didn't have a sign up today, so they've been adjourned to the next meeting, which is?
June twenty second.
June twenty second, we're here, move.
So move second.
All right, again. Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Yes.
And Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. On wood and up wood.
Okay, next we have appeal number two thousand seventeen dash thirty three for Robert Fox of one thirteen Point Street, South Jamesport, forbearances to end or relief from the provisions of chapter three zero one, section fifteen A one C, where the proposed accessory detached garage is ten feet from the rear and side property lines, where the minimum required is twenty feet. Chapter three zero one, section seventeen, where the proposed impervious surface is thirty-one percent of the total lot area, where the maximum permitted is fifteen percent. The proposed front yard setback is thirty feet, where the minimum required is fifty feet. The proposed side yard setback is twenty-one feet, where the minimum required is twenty-five feet. And the proposed rear yard setback is forty-two feet, where the minimum required is sixty feet.
And if you step up the mic, move.
I have his.
Was that?
I have his.
Yeah, his name, thank you. Are you an attorney?
No, I'm not.
I didn't think so, you look all right. Raise your right hand, are you swayed to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
All right.
You look all right, babe.
Uh, my name is Bob Fox, my wife and I are currently in contract purchases. I am a surveyor, I put together the site plan, showing all the setbacks.
Hold the mic down, Bob.
Hello?
There you go.
Um, I did submit the uh site plan for review. Um, I do have approval from health department with the uh septic, but they're not willing to release that until I have this. The house that is proposed, I believe, is just over twelve hundred square feet. And I did also include another drawing, which shows most of the setbacks up and down the street. And it actually exceeds most of the existing setbacks, um. And basically, if it's any smaller than this, it'd be too small, um and I think it does conform mostly with what's in the neighborhood. I did try to put the garage to the one corner where there is an existing garage, and ones of the other to adjoining lots. Um, other than that, I hope to answer any questions.
Are you comfortable with yourself?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Are you aware how quiet it is there?
I'm sorry.
Are you aware how quiet it is?
Yeah, I'm, I hear that it's quiet um most of the year, but not a lot.
It's very nice. Very nice environment.
Madam, if you have a long time hearing, might I ask you to step up the front row? That's okay.
Uh, don't go much else other than that.
All that's here, anyone in the uh audience have anything to say?
Small house, right? Happy with the house?
Please, whoa, 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 whoa.
You have to come up with the mic.
Up the microphone.
First time you do.
Well, then if you raise your right hand, this way, we put it aside. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Just state your name and your address.
My name is Mary Ellen Smith, and I live at one oh four Green Street. Um, no, but when I was just looking at this, I thought it was going to be a much bigger house, but it doesn't seem like it's going to be a big house, right?
No, I thought it was a French apartment.
Yeah, so, um.
It sounds like it looks like.
Yeah, yeah, so that's it, I just wanted to be sworn in.
How about sworn out?
If that's been something you've been wanting to do all your life, you may be ready.
I do now.
On your bucket list. Next is uh jumping out of a plane.
Anyone else, nobody? Okay.
I'm in the determination of one thirteen Point Street, South Jamesport, forbearances to to be from provisions of chapter three oh one, section fifteen A one C, where the proposed accessory detached garage is ten feet from the rear and side property, where the minimum required is twenty feet. Chapter three oh one, section seventeen, where the proposed impervious surface is thirty-one percent of the total lot area, where the maximum permitted is fifteen percent. The proposed side, I'm sorry, the proposed front yard setback is thirty feet, where the minimum required is fifty feet. The proposed side yard setback is twenty-one feet, where the minimum required is twenty-five feet. The proposed rear yard setback is forty-two feet, where the minimum required is fifty feet. The application and sketches, they members there to, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Wait here a second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal's been granted, in about two weeks from now, we're gonna go into the continuing process. In the meantime, welcome to South Jamesport, and it's a different community down there, and get to know your neighbors. They are up here quite a few times, and I don't blame them. Anyway. Next up. There you go. You got the cake coming over and the uh milk if you need.
Next we have appeal number two thousand seventeen dash thirty four for Steven Sigenock of eight Willow Street, Aquabog, forbearances to end or relief from the provisions of chapter three oh one, section seventeen, where the proposed rear yard setback of the addition is twenty-four feet, where the minimum required is forty feet.
And again, if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
My name is Steven Sigenock. Eight Willow Street, Riverhead, Aquabog.
You got it. You have the floor, what do you want, what do you want to do?
I'm doing a fourteen by sixteen foot extension on the rear to house, which would be a den. I'm doing fourteen by sixteen foot extension on the rear to house, it would be a den, I think that's it. Pretty simple.
Okay, we like simple.
Okay. So, um, the purpose of the expansion, the den? The den. How many people are caroling in your house, sir?
Just two of us.
Two of us? How many square feet is your house?
Right now it's fourteen hundred.
We were down there and I won't see that there's a problem, I don't have a birthday and you always have to ask out there, anyone have a problem with this? In the audience, nobody? Well, let's see what we can do.
Okay, Chairman, I move that the determination of eight Willow Street, Aquabog. For variances two and or relief from the provisions of chapter three oh one, section seventeen. Where the proposed rear yard setback of addition is twenty-four feet where the minimum required is forty feet. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments there two of any as filed with the building inspector.
Second. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Widmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeals been granted, so in about two weeks from now, building department, continue on the process, best of luck.
Good luck, sir.
Enjoy your place.
Thank you.
Next we have appeal number two thousand seventeen dash thirty-five for Jonathan Troyan, uh, fifty-three Beach Road, Aquabog. For variances two and or relief from the provisions of chapter two seventeen, section six, section four. Where the proposed electric service represents a second meter on a single family dwelling lot.
And if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
Jonathan Troyan, fifty-three Beach Road, Riverhead.
Aye, Mr. Troyan, what do you got?
Looking for relief for the, uh, 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 second meter on a single family residence for shore power to my docks. So I could, uh, have ice heaters, uh, bubble system, I just spent a lot of money on day to the whole bulkhead. And I wanna keep it that way.
How many docks do you have down there?
I have the capacity to keep six, uh, boats there.
Are those your boats?
Uh, no, no.
Who's boats, I have six bases.
I have two watercrafts myself, personal watercraft with one boat, and one friend keeps a boat there.
So that's four.
That's four. I'm in the market right now to buy another boat that's gonna exceed fifty amps. I come to the ZBA to request relief because my electrician advised me to, that the current panel in my house is almost two capacity.
This would be exclusively for your dock?
Yes.
Second meter?
Yes.
How long have the docks been there, Mr. Troyan?
Uh. That I couldn't tell you. I know that the, the house was, uh, built in the, uh, the sixties.
Because your dad lives next door, right?
Yes.
He's got the docks, he had, uh, the way, do they have commercial docks and things like that?
Yes.
How long do you own that house, sir?
I bought it three months prior to Superstorm Sandy, seven thousand dollars.
All right, so let me just get this straight. How many boats are yours?
How many boats do I have right now?
Yes.
I have three personal watercrafts, one boat.
All right, when you say three watercraft, what kind of?
Like, wave runners.
And they need a dock for each one of those wave runners?
Well, I already have one, the docks are there.
Okay.
How long have the docks been there, you know?
That I couldn't tell you.
Did you get a permit to rebuild it?
I, I have a, uh, um, I was granted a, uh, a permit from the DEC and the CAC. For, uh, for swarm damage from Superstorm Sandy. So, everything was built and up to code. And has been inspected by, uh, the Riverhead Town.
So prior to you buying the house, were there docks there that other people used?
Yes, yes.
So, kind of?
And there was, there was several, uh, I think there were like three or four twenty-foot sailboats that were, uh, more, uh, docked there.
But I think some of the neighbors who received some correspondence, some of the main neighbors are concerned about parking there. Let's just say you have a, one of your friends that you left. Use your slips, where, where would they park?
Um.
If you're marking there, you'll have to pay right there.
Well, I mean, I have the capacity to increase my, uh, my driveway, which, if I brought a picture of my property right now, there's an area to the left of my driveway that I found on paving. So I'll have the capacity to, to actually park one, two, three, four, five, six, up to eight cars.
You have residential area?
Yes. It is a three-bedroom house, so.
There was today, there was about four, four cars that day? Were they for all the residents in that house?
They're all mine.
You own four cars, sir?
I own, uh, a lot, well, there's a cross.
Okay, just asking.
I have a business in town, Riverhead, I have multiple vehicles, how to keep, actually two of the vehicles that are there, they're gonna be put up for sale, so they're not gonna be there for long. So it'll be my wife's keep, my truck. Which alleviates a lot of the spaces. So although that box truck that's there, that's gonna be sold, there's a Toyota truck, that's gonna be sold. And I also want, if, if, if parking was a problem, I also want two other houses on the road, I can put cars in those driveways as well. But I'm not doing this to, to overcrowd the neighborhood, to, you know, I'm just looking for power for my docks.
Okay, let's, uh, hear, any, uh, neighbors here, please? Oh, if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
And if you state your name and your address.
My name is Tricia Shackle and I live at forty-two Beach Road, diagonally across from John Troyan's property.
Are you the young lady that sends the?
I did write a letter, um, and then I ch-
And you asked for, you weren't gonna be, you're only?
That's correct, I changed my schedule and here I am.
And you have a floor.
Thank you. Um, as Mr. Troyan stated, he does have six boat slips, um, in the back of his property. And my assumption was that he was going to, um, use those slips and rent them out. Um, the biggest concern has to do with the parking. Like I said, I live across the street. Mr. Troyan does have a lot of vehicles currently in his parking, in his driveway. The other day, he had five vehicles there, I know one of them was your dad's, visiting the granddaughter, but he's usually there, but there's a lot of vehicles there. And I just feel that I don't wanna look at a parking lot across the street. So if he's got six slips, even if he rents out three and those people bring three guests on their boat, everybody has a car. And I think it would really compromise the integrity and the beauty of our neighborhood. The greater part of, uh, Beach Road where we live on is a very, very narrow street, so there really is no on-street parking with very little exception. Nobody really parks on the street to allow vehicles to go back and forth and to protect your own vehicle. My other concern is if John rents out these slips. As you know, people enjoy getting onto the water and they load their coolers up on the boats. And they go out and they have a grand old day, they come back, they get back in their cars, and maybe some of those people should not be driving. So between the parking and the possibility of people partying too much on their boats. If Mr. Troyan, sorry, if John wanted to, you know, put in a pool and needed electrical for his pool and his pump and his lights and his jacuzzi and his hot tub, I really wouldn't have a problem with it. My biggest concern is the lack of parking on his property. Thank you.
Anyone else? Paul, please step up. If you kindly raise your right hand and pull that microphone down to the front view. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and your address.
My name is Holly Doring and I'm the one, I think in your minutes that you were referring to earlier. Okay, so shall I speak again or?
You certainly may.
What was your name, ma'am?
Holly Doring, D O E R I N G, I live at fifty Beach Road, directly across from the premises. And as you can see, I did send a picture, I don't know if you had it up there.
We did, we got it.
Yeah, it's, um, just, if it were just for deicing, 'cause I can understand he spent a lot of money and he has his docks there. But I really feel that the parking situation's out of control. And as you can see from that one picture, it was taken from my front door, and that's what I look at every day, I look at a box truck. And, um, that box truck until recently was unexpected and under construction since two thousand eight. So it's like really looking at the back of a restaurant, right on my front door. And he has so many vehicles and says that he's gonna sell them, but that's not, that's neither here nor there. There is no parking on the street, it's a one-way road. And so that's what my objection is to, ooh, nervous, I just was, I was just in Mexico City, I just drove here like a maniac, kinda, the Guardia Airport.
Take a, take a deep breath, take a deep breath, let it out, and walk away.
So like I said, if it were just for, you know, deicing or something like that, but really, if I had six boat slips, I would probably be wanting to rent them too. But the situation is the parking. And unless he wants to turn his backyard into a parking lot for all his guests, I mean, that would be fine with me. But there is no parking out in the front. And the concern is also, once you have a second electric service, does another building follow? Can you build another, it's a big lot, can you build another house, huh?
That's a zoning issue. He's here for the two-meter, I, just so you understand, the two-meter section of the code was originally intended for people not putting in second wheels to develop to family dwellings. It wasn't really meant for this kind of issue. Before that go change, had you come in for a second panel, you'd even know it happened. And you'd really have no control, and you necessarily have an existing, non-ophensive use that he has. I mean, we can put some conditions on it that everybody's agreeable. Uh, or maybe some of your excess vehicles you could, uh, maybe put somewhere else and maybe provide parking behind your garage. Couple of spots in case you have friends that come. You know? Well, I mean, do I need to?
No, you would have, you'd have to get in front of the mic.
If you need to get up and speak, I just wanna see if people are amenable to some kind of a solution. Or we say yes or no.
Yeah, but how do you enforce that? You can't.
The law's a thing, yes, a day that they can't enforce, but we could go on and on.
You know, we'd say, you know, okay, there's gonna be a parking lot built in the back of the house and all the cars will park there, so, you know, he could look at his.
Well, he's using three foot.
Box trucks and commercial vehicles, 'cause from what I understand, the law, the regulation is you're allowed two commercial vehicles parked on your lawn?
I don't know anything about the parking, I didn't say I know there was something done.
Yes, I was talking to, uh, Richard Downs and he said that, um, as long as they are registered and inspected, that they are allowed to park a commercial vehicle too. And you can't, there's no restrictions on where you can park them, you can park them on the front of your lawn. Doesn't have to be on a dry or paved surface.
You know, it's, some young people have a life this, he, he probably hasn't gotten around to knowing what he needs to do because he has a business that he owns. But maybe we can convince him, maybe we can move some of his vehicles to your business. You know, make it more residential again. And if you decide to have a couple of people over, like, erasing the dock or letting over the middle dock, provide a couple of spaces behind your garage, that's all. So they don't have to look at it, and everybody's happy. And you're gonna give a reprieve and replevin, you know, the problem. But I think that's only fair, I mean, he has the right, I mean, technically he could put a sub-panel in and say no, but just do it.
Well, he does have, um, two electric panels on the edge of the road, since Sandy, when he renovated the house. And one of them is for his house, and the other one, I guess, was in.
Four.
For these, uh, boat slips.
What, what, you have panels to the, to the panel, you can increase it, Mr. Troyan?
No, uh, it was my anticipation, anticipation to do this down the road. So we put up the tree to the elevation to, um, to meet Sandy's requirements for the height of the electrical panel.
So you put an elevation on your, your, whatever you say?
Uh, and I had the electric, uh, I had the electrician put the.
Panel.
Put the, uh, the panel where they put the, eventually put the meter in there. That's what they did.
So why are you there? Why are you there?
So the existing meter for the house.
They, they put, they put a box in, does it show?
I put the box there, so I won't have the back trunk down the road, which.
But they're not connected. You can't get in there to the rest of town approved it. 'Cause we have an electrical inspector that would give you the certificate to, to energize it. That's why it's, you're in that situation.
Yes.
So your electrician advised you to get.
To come in.
A connect and then you wind up here because it's not allowed.
Correct.
Okay, so.
So I mean, as far as the parking goes as well, I'm willing to work, I'll pull my, my commercial vehicles out there, other than my own personal business truck, I need transportation back and forth.
Yeah, of course.
I have no problem with that.
I know you've been good.
And that's ultimately gonna free up a lot of parking. I mean, is there a certain amount of cars that are locked, uh, allowed out of a three-bedroom house?
Well.
Is there something on the code with that?
Well, there probably isn't, but when you have six docks, and let's say, uh, friends come over and there's six or eight cars on the lot. I think it's a quality of life issue as far as what's going on.
Yeah.
I know the area, small, thin, I mean, narrow roads and, you know, six or eight cars on the lot there.
I, 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 I understand that, so, but I've also owned the house since two thousand and twelve and I believe there's two years that I've had boats at this house, one boat per year. I kept my boat at my other house. So in the past several years, no one's been there. So history, history dictates that, I don't want a lot of people in my backyard using the docks.
Well, I understand that, we understand that.
You know, I, I want quality of life myself, I don't want a marina in my backyard.
Yeah, I agree.
I bought a house that happened to have six boat slips, I wanna keep the six boat slips.
I was trying.
I don't want them to be silver and I don't wanna, you know, devalue my property. So.
It's not, I don't think it's a problem, I think they're just concerned about parking, so.
Yeah.
I think if we, if we can agree to it, maybe put it as a condition that you provide restful behind your garage.
I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to talk with the, uh, the planning department and I'd have to call an attorney on that because.
You don't have to. No, you don't. No, no.
I don't, I don't feel that I need to in this situation.
Well, I think if.
If there's a problem with a buffer, I'd be willing to maybe plant bushes so they aren't, they can't see.
Of course. Okay, you do that.
And screen that. There, I'm not on the corner a lot, I'm in an interior piece of property.
No, we are.
So I have no height restrictions from what I understand on planning plans in my front yard.
How are the cars gonna get in, in front of what?
The part that's not paved right now, I could block off the corner so it wouldn't be visible.
How are they gonna get into that corner?
Is there a basement, by any chance, on the house?
There's crawl space.
Crawl space?
Yes. I'm not looking to open up a marina, I'm looking to maintain my property. I don't know where everyone's coming up with the idea that I'm gonna be renting six boat slips out because I'm not going to. So I just wanna be able to protect my property, that's the bottom line here.
Well, like I said, you can put a sub-panel and call it a den.
Oh, I could do that, I could do that, but my electrician said, I'm in the market, I have a lot of, I like my off time, I'm gonna be purchasing a bigger boat. The field boat that I have in mind is gonna exceed fifty amps, so. Work hard, play hard.
Oh, gosh.
Okay, well, let's put this off in the next meeting, we're gonna do a little, uh, research and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, thank you.
What's the next meeting date?
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal number seventeen dash thirty-five, Jonathan Troyan, adjourned June twenty-second.
Mr. Barnes. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
See that? Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Widmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
I vote aye. I move, do we accept the meeting, the minutes of the last meeting? Do we hear a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we hear a motion to adjourn? Whoa! Excuse me, hold on a second.
I, I'm here, Mr. Walter Buna from Beach Road, River, waiting river. I'm here for two thousand seventeen zero thirty-two.
That was adjourned.
I had never received a notice.
Yeah, well, we, we went there yesterday, they had no sign on the property. So I told the people there, we are not going to hear this.
Okay, they have to repost it.
The people that live there or, or renters?
They're rentals, right, they're rental people.
Are you the owner?
No.
Okay, so I told those folks, you call the owner, the property was not posted properly. So they have to come to the next meeting and before they come to the next meeting, that property has to be posted.
Reposted, yes. Okay, now, I, I.
Unfortunately, we can't take testimony tonight, but.
No, I'm not, I need to, just for informational purposes.
Sure, yeah, 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 go ahead.
I, uh, I will be able to make the meeting on the twenty-second.
Well, you're at the owner's though, right?
No, 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 he's.
I'm the neighbor.
You're the neighbor.
Uh, problem being that disputed area is two feet on my property. My main concern is, how do I get my two feet back?
How about, how about, how about we adjourn it to the next meeting after that? Which is?
Turn on my phone, I don't have the calendar.
Well, we have, we have to turn on our secretary, she'll tell us.
Oh, do you wanna write us a note?
No, we, we can, let's settle this right now.
I can come.
The next meeting would be the thirteenth of July, after that, if you're available, we can adjourn it until then, so that you can be here.
Okay, but, uh, is, is there anyone, do I need to seek counsel, or, or do I need?
No, 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 no.
I think he's gonna resolve it personally, I'm just telling you.
Okay, I'm not looking, look.
I think he wants to move, remove part of it, because it's encroaching on your property.
That's my only concern, if he, he wants to have that thing there, that's fine with me.
He's cutting it back.
That, that's fine with me, I'm not looking to, to, to cause a problem, I just don't want, when, if.
He's not claiming any adverse possession.
If I have to do, sell my home, I.
Don't spend money on a lawyer, save your money.
I'm not looking to be controversial, adversarial either.
Good.
That's all, I just want to.
Great, I think you're gonna be fine.
Get my, thank you, get my two, get the two feet straightened out, property line is there, he wants to sell, I wanna sell, we can do whatever we want, that's why I'm here, I'm not here to
Okay.
condemn anyone over.
We understand that.
Okay.
Right.
But let's, is July thirteen, what's for you?
Can I get, uh, do we have a, can I look at a, do you have a calendar, or?
It's a Thursday, I can tell you that.
It's, it's the second Thursday in July, so.
I know, but I, I got a lot on my plate, believe it or not, being retired, I'm more busy than I am.
What are you retired from?
Uh, the State Park P D.
Use a flashlight, man.
Spent, I spent a lot of time.
Which park?
Wildwood.
You were a Wildwood cop, did you replace Chip? Uh, no, Mister Airman, remember Mister Airman?
Bud, no, that's, he, 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 yeah, the former, yeah.
Bud? He was way before you. I was president, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's all, I just wanted to, uh, that's.
Do you remember Mister Wilk?
Excuse me?
Mister Wilk.
No. I started in seventy nine. That's, that's scary, huh? And we're looking at folks, July thirteenth?
Yes.
I'll be away also.
Uh, you know what?
I'll be in Tennessee.
Why don't you write us a letter for the next meeting, and, and, you know, address the.
Address the issue, and we, we will take care of it.
In, in a letter?
Yes, please.
You could, you could send it to me in an email, or on a letter, or whatever works best.
Can I make a point, though, legally?
Yeah.
We couldn't grant him a variance if it's encroaching on your property.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not here to, I'm just here to.
He's trying to maintain it, because he needs to get a rental car, so, he's probably gonna cut it back, so that it's off of your property.
That's, that's all.
And then he's not gonna claim any adverse possession, because we won't grant it to him.
That's all I ask, that's, that's, that's.
I think that's what he has to do, and he knows it.
Okay, that's all I ask, and if I have someone to take my place, uh.
Thank you, ladies.
All right, that's fine, also, my, my, the co-owner, my wife, all right?
No, but if you want to.
I gotta keep her happy, you know what's good for you.
So July thirteenth, yeah.
I'll be here on something else, yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Motion to close.
Okay, can, can I just ask one thing, I forgot to hand in a picture, is it too late to do that?
No, you can, no, 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 you can hand it, we like it.
We saw all those trucks.
Oh.
I was taking a volume one, listen.
Well, it, it wouldn't be maintained, let's put it that way.
So who gets this lovely picture that I, I took?
And we just pass it over to.
Okay, good.
We love to email most of us, so.
Yes, I, I should have, I should have, but I wasn't gonna be here.
That's okay.
Anyway, where are you going to, where are you going, Tennessee, you said?
Uh, Holly did it.
Tennessee.
Have a great night, everyone, thank you.
I'm the one who lives directly across the street, so that's what I look at, every day.
No, actually, I'm, I'm a, I'm a competitive shooter, cowboy action shooter, that's why.
I believe that.
We, uh, action shooter.
Thank you.
Yes, we dress up as, uh.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Anywhere from the Civil War to, uh, eighteen ninety nine.
So you're a, a reenactor?
Well, it's, it's kinda like reenacting, but we, it, it's a world, uh, class shooting championship or, organization, it's, it, there's members in, uh, Czech Republic, Germany, Sweden, France.
Well, I tell you what, stick 'em up, buddy, I'm from the forties.
Poland, and, uh, and, uh, Tennessee is one of the, uh, one of the regional shoots that I participate in, I'll be going to New Mexico in, uh, June, that's the world championship.
World championship.
Yeah, and the national championship is in Phoenix, Arizona, in February.[1749.01]